Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
At tonight's meeting, we have Ms. Judith Whiteside, Mr. Alan Slaven, Mr. Ronald Bessie, and Mr. Derek Sullivan, and myself, Ms. Tricia Wertz.
And absent would be Jared Chadwick and Rich Bowen. Thank you. May I have a pledge of allegiance? Derek, is it your turn? It's your turn now. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Announcements. Mr. Bessie, any announcements?
I have none tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, any announcements, please?
Yep, I voted often and frequently, and just remind anyone, it's seven o'clock. You've got another hour if you haven't gone out and voted yet. It's a privilege to be able to vote. Many countries don't have this privilege. And I ask everybody to take advantage of having some control of the government that taxes you and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz, any announcements?
I would just ditto what Mr. Slaven just said. Please, if you haven't yet, please get out and vote.
Thank you. The only announcement I have is one of saying thank you to a bunch of youngsters who on last Wednesday, the 26th, two days after the start of the town meeting, actually did a trash pickup. And we did the trash pickup with the JROTC program as well as the leadership class students. We went from town hall to shaws on both sides of the road. So I'd like to read their names. We have sent them certificates and thank yous, but this was a rough week for those kids, and this was meaningful that they were able to come out and contribute to the community. Sam, these are the JROTC cadets. Sam Colini, Ally Amsler, James McEwen, Mariah Enos, Emma Sylvia, Carter Phillips, Amaya Irving, Jayden Jones, Aaron Legg, Alicia Morrell, and Alexis Randolph. The leadership class students were Taylor Augustine, Miles Ellis, Joseph Madeiras, Seamus Robbins, Anthony Scafati, Kenley Thomas, Caleb Butiget, Kevin Bonner, Nicholas Fowler, Amaya Gonzalez, Curtis Kimball, Juan Rosario, Anaya Rose, and John Varden. Thank you very much. We really appreciate what the program, the JROTC program and the Key Club do for the town, which is semi-annual cleanups. Okay, we have some appointments and reappointments. Ms. Wertz, may I have a motion, please?
The first appointment is for Sharon Rice. I move to appoint Sharon Rice to the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors representing the town of Wareham for a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Sharon Rice. She, obviously from the town of Wareham, she's the director of our COA. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. She is appointed. Thank you. Next, Ms. Wertz?
We have, I make a motion to appoint Marie Riley to the Council of Aging for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let me do a little explaining here. Marie Riley resigned because she thought she was going to be moving to Florida earlier than she will be moving to Florida. So we, she asked to be reappointed to the committee so that she could continue to serve until she does move, which will probably be later on this fall. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. I see a hand up. I don't know why Maury Carlin has his or her hand up. I need to have you send us a chat, please. Ms. Wertz, may I have six A and a motion for the application for signs, please?
So I make a motion to approve the application from the Wareham Historical Society to place signs on town property as listed in the application.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to place signs. The application was correctly filled out and all the documentation is in order. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. It is approved. And the next one, please.
Okay, the next is an application for, do you say that on a set? On a set? Only set? Only set? So I make a motion to approve the application from only set wigwam to place signs on town property.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to place the signs on town property. You'll notice that one of these sign placements has already come and gone, but that's fine. They did apply, so the application is filled out correctly. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No, I'd just like to thank them for finally actually applying for the right to do it over the years they never have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. It is approved. May I have the renewal of the secondhand dealer's license, please?
I make, I make a motion that we renew Gold World second where is it? Secondhand dealer's license.
Second. Motion made and seconded to renew the secondhand dealer's license for Gold World. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All of the paperwork is in order. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. It is approved. And the next one, Ms. Wertz?
Okay, the next has to do with the 99 Restaurant. So I move to approve the change of officers for 99 West LLC DBA 99 Restaurant and Pub 40 Rose Book Place Wareham as listed in the application.
Second. For a change of officer.
For a change of officers.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Again, I'm going to ask Maury Carlin, who has his or her hand up, to send us a chat. I do not understand why you have your hand up. I don't recognize your name, so please send us a chat, please. Is there any further discussion on the motion? This is a it's a very thick packet of information, and it has already been basically okayed by the ABCC. This is a major change in officers. All of the paperwork is in order. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No, I've gone through the paperwork as well, very thoroughly. Everything's in place.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. It is granted. And the next one, Ms. Wertz, please?
The next has to do with the Point Independence Yard Club, and I move to approve the renewal of a public entertainment license for Point Independence Yard Club, DBA Point Independence Yard Club, 15 Independent Lane Wareham.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the public amusement license. All of the paperwork is in order. Is there any further discussion on the motion, Mr. Slaven?
Are they going to be running musical events at the clubhouse? Is that the reason for?
It's a renewal of what they've done historically, so I can't answer that question, but I can look in on second.
Do they give us the hours that they'll do this? I didn't see that. That's what I'm asking.
Yep, hang on.
There's been some issues on that neighborhood, you know, with the art club and some of the neighbors, so I'm just concerned that we don't end up having a complaints coming down the line.
Public amusement on weekdays license for live entertainment, public amusement on weekdays license for dancing, public amusement billiard and pool table license, which covers obviously those things. Expires on November 30th. And it would be issued as of today. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I would, I would vote okay with the condition that the suppliers of the hours that they'll be in operation that way.
Is do you want to do you want to make that as, do you want to have Ms. Wertz amend her motion?
Yeah, if she could just add.
Subject to?
The hours they plan to operate the amusement license.
Ms. Wertz, is that okay for you to add that to your motion?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie, is that okay for you to add to your second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you very much. It is four zero zero. The next item on the agenda is the proclamation for Race Amity Day. We have a proclamation that we issue every year, but I'd like to have Ms. Wertz read it into the record. It's an important day for the town to recognize. Ms. Wertz?
Proclamation for Race Amity Day, whereas Wareham supports the Great Seal of the United States of America, which bears the inscription e pluribus unum, which translates from Latin to as out of many one. Whereas the greatest asset of the Wareham, of the town of Wareham, is its people. Whereas the town of Wareham is comprised of multicultural, multi-ethical, ethnic, and multiracial citizens. Whereas friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of the town of Wareham. Whereas the National Center of Race Amity has invited communities across the United States of America to join in introspection and reflection on the beauty and richness of the diverse peoples of this great nation, which while reaching out with a spirit of amity toward one another annually on the second Sunday of June. And whereas H. 2745, Chapter 163 of Acts of 2015 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts establishes the second Sunday in June annually as Race Amity Day. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wareham Police of excuse me, be it resolved that the Wareham Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim the second Sunday of June to be Race Amity Day, and urge all citizens of the town of Wareham to caught cognizance of this event and to participate fittingly in its observance. And witness, therefore, we, the Wareham Board of Selectmen, have hereunto set our hands and cause the official seal of the town of Wareham to be affixed the 16th day of May, 2023.
Thank you. And actually, you read it wrong. It says Select Board, doesn't it? You read Select Board of Selectmen twice, but it actually says Select Board, doesn't it, Ms. Wertz? Yes, it does, Ms. Wertz. Thank you very much, Ms. Wertz. We'll get that fixed. And you should read it this, this second day of May. Thank you very much, okay?
I was wondering where the 16th day of May came from.
Because we had to bounce things around a couple of times. Is there she has read the proclamation or any comments to be made about the proclamation? I don't think, we will get it corrected and we will post it online. Thank you very much. The next article on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote to give the chair authority to ratify the hiring of a town clerk. Mr. Sullivan, I'm going to ask you to explain the necessity to have this done at this time.
Yeah, thank you. As you know, we posted for the town clerk's office back in March. One of the things you try and do is have it so there's an overlap. You obviously can't hire right away and have, have two concurrent clerks at the same time for, for months on end. So we, we put forward, we've posted for the position, and we've had, we've had some excellent candidates. We were down to our last interview yesterday. So timing wise, it was, it was not possible to get the board a, a name and a going forward for tonight wouldn't give you enough of the, you know, if you will, information. So we'll be sending out the information because I believe an offer has gone out today. Get that over to you, but my understanding is, just looking at it, you have 15 days to affirm the hire. The Board of Selectmen are not meeting next week, and I don't think you'd have a quorum, so honestly, rather than waiting to start our process of doing everything from drug testing, queries, the queries and everything that goes along the way, we'd like to see if waiting 15 days to do that, we'd like to see if the board would give one member the affirmation right for this one time only. And so we could move forward with the hire. And given the way everything's shaking out, we believe we will have at least one week of, of overlap on them. The candidates we've had are all trained town clerks or assistant town clerk, so we did not interview anybody that had not served in the, in the, in either position. So realistically, what we're asking is, rather than waiting, it would be 15 days after the next selectman's meeting, which would bring you basically towards the end of May, and then starting the process. We'd like to do that ahead of time.
I just would like to add something that you also shared with me, and probably we should make a statement. In order for this position to go from an elected position to a hired position, you had to not only have a job description created, you also had to negotiate with the union. Is that correct?
Yep, to make sure where it would be on the union charts and go through, so you know, it's not one of those things where you just click your finger and it instantly happens. And frankly, I'd rather do it right than, than with speed, so.
Right. So there was from the time that we actually got the official notification from the clerk that she would be leaving us, there was a process that had to be taken and followed. This is under the Charter Section 2-4, semi-section 1-1, which gives the board, the board, the ability to either reject or affirm a hiring or to let it lie on the table. So what, what we are asking for tonight is to have you vote to give the chair the authority to ratify the hiring of a town clerk, presuming that the offer can come back with, with all of the requirements of the paperwork in terms of the query checks and, and fiscal as well as references.
Right. Plus, it allows them to give their notice to where they are and, and move forward. So that's a one time only, obviously. So it's not for every time.
Okay. Yes, so are there any other questions about this or any comments about this?
Just a, I guess, just a point of clarification. So you, you mentioned the word union. Is this a non-union position? This is just, you had to go through to make sure everything was. So I just want to understand that. Is that, are they, is this going to be a protected union position, or is this not a protected union position?
It is a union position. All department heads that are appointed are union positions.
Okay. It's just, I just wanted to point a clarification for anybody that might not know.
There are steelworkers for the record, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, it's just no longer an elected position, that's why.
That's correct. May I have a motion then?
I'm looking at how to word that, so please help me.
Move to authorize the chair to ratify the hiring of a town clerk.
So may.
On behalf of the Select Board. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The serpent presentation has been postponed until the 16th at their request. If you are here for the information on the Sawyer Street parcel, could you please raise your hand? That would be Elise Ladue Fleming, Josh Farady, I saw you, Nancy McHale. And I, again, I don't know who Maury, Maury Carlin is. I haven't been able to ascertain who that person is, so I.
I think that person may be the one who sent us under the 617 phone number that the chat was not working. The chat is definitely working.
Okay. Josh Farady should also be in the meeting, please. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is discussion and possibly vote to approve that the Wareham Conservation Commission hold the conservation restriction on the property known as the Sawyer Parcel, the purchase of which using CPC funds was approved at our town meeting last week. So we have with us, I guess, Mr. Farady, I would ask that he go first. And then Ms. McHale is here on behalf of the Wareham Land Trust, as is Elise Ladue Fleming. So Josh, could you speak to the request, please?
Sure. Can everyone hear me all right?
Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Sure. Josh Farady, the Conservation Administrator for the town of Wareham. So recently, we sent the Select Board a letter petitioning that the Wareham Conservation Department or Commission holds the CR for the property that was approved to be purchased with CPC funds. I don't think there's any surprise in that. I guess you would like me to describe, you know, the CR process and maybe some other properties that the town of Wareham already has CRs for or holds CRs. So currently, with the partnership of the Wareham Land Trust, the town of Wareham owns or holds the Congress Conservation Restriction for the Tweedy and Bard's Extension, Gleason Marks Co., Columbia Street Marks Co., and the Select Board holds the 600 Main Street Conservation Restriction. We also hold some that are not owned by the Wareham Land Trust, which is the John Deacon's property, Wicket's Island. We have a very good relationship with the Wareham Land Trust, where not only do we hold some of their CRs, but they hold some of our CRs for the Farring Hill Preservation, the Westgate Preserve, Murphy Freedom Preserve, and the Bryant Farm Preserve. You know, there are certain things that are required with the CRs, which would include an annual monitoring report. The Wareham Land Trust does these reports for their own properties as well as properties that they hold the CR for, and they supply us with the annual monitoring report. So it's something that they do as well. So in the petition for us to hold the CR for the Sawyer property, it would not be required for us to do the annual report as the Wareham Land Trust is already doing one of their own. With that being said, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Ms. McHale, would you like to speak as well? Or Elise Ladue Fleming, would you, either one of you choose to add to what Josh has said?
This is Nancy McHale. Thank you very much. I would defer my time to Elise. I know your arm quite stretched tonight for time.
Okay, thanks. Elise, go ahead.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Elise Ladue Fleming. I'm the Executive Director of the Wareham Land Trust. I think Josh described it really well. I would just reiterate that it has been a really useful partnership, a collaborative partnership between the town and the land trust since the beginning, since Farring Hill. And I, it is our understanding that this can be done with, with no staff time on the part of, of the Wareham Town employees. Josh would not have to go out and do the monitoring. We do have volunteers that do that, which does check the box for the, the annual monitoring requirement if that was a concern from the town. But I'm happy to answer any other questions or address any other concerns the Select Board might have.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the monitoring, which is normally required in a conservation restriction. I, I would imagine or hope that the the conservation restriction that we have will have some wording that says that the land trust will be doing the work that's required by the town, holding the the restriction, because I don't think you can just automatically say that the land trust will supply some information, because we are the ones that are supposed to do that, and there's always a cost when we do it. I understand what we're trying to do to help the town out, to hold the restriction with any cost, but I think Josh still is going to have to go and do it on his own or one of the Conservation Commission members. I don't think you can sit there and just say, we're not going to do it because someone else is going to do it.
Does anybody know who Susan Rossman is or Maury Carlin? No, okay. To address your concern, would it is the land trust able to write a letter to the town saying that they would do the, the monitoring? I mean, would that satisfy your concerns?
I just don't, I just don't know, because you know, the land trust, you know, the land trust is, is getting the land with CPA funding. And at the same time, they're the one doing the monitoring, and I think there's a conflict there. Sorry to make life difficult, but I, from a legal standpoint, I, I'm a little concerned. If you want, we can go ahead and do it with, with the condition that this is okay by town council.
Josh, or?
I, I would agree with you in that regard. The Wareham Land Trust does supply me with an annual monitoring report that I have been reviewing. So I don't know if that would satisfy you with just the review of that report under my discretion.
If you're willing to sign off on it.
Yeah, I think, Elise, in your reports, can you have a sign off section for me? Or maybe that's something we could create and viewpoint and have an additional layer of application, I guess, or, or reporting?
I think we can, if, if this would make you more comfortable, Mr. Slaven, we could also add that extra layer of sign off on the existing CR properties too, just to, you know, it's no additional work. It's another piece of paper. But just for, for Josh's review, those annual monitoring reports include maps, GPS tracks, photos with point location, so he'd be able to see that a monitor actually walked the areas they were supposed to walk. He'd be able to see what they saw. And if there was anything that he felt was, was missing, or, you know, areas that weren't covered appropriately, we could, we could follow up at his discretion.
Yeah, I understand. My wife and I, we actually are stewards for a piece of property, you know, as well, for the land trust. We do this as well. I just want to make sure that we don't have any loopholes.
Would that be okay with you, Mr. Farady, and would that be okay with you, Ms. McHale?
Yeah, I don't see an issue.
Absolutely. That would be fine with me. The other thing that we do is for our annual monitorings, there is a conversation back and forth, a notice to the we who will hold, if we hold a CR and we're going to go out and monitor it, we send a letter or an email to the owner of the property, and that then there's a communication back and forth saying, this is the date we did it, and this is what we found, et cetera, and they get a copy of that report. Josh certainly could send us a note on a yearly basis and say, excuse me, did you monitor if indeed they haven't gotten anything in a timely manner?
Thank you.
I'll just piggyback on that for one brief second. I did receive a CR monitoring you know, request early in my, early in the start of my position that I did attend. So if they are doing the CR walk and I do have, you know, an hour that I could attend, I would probably attend the walk anyway, so.
Okay, thank you. I, are there any other questions of any of the three individuals? No. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Town of Wareham Conservation Commission be named the holder of the Conservation Restriction on the property known as Sawyer, map 128 lot 1006, with the agreement that's been made at this meeting in place.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The agreement would be the annual walking or the annual review would be done by Wareham Land Trust and signed off ultimately by the Town of Wareham's Conservation Agent. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. It is done, ladies and gentlemen, and I will leave it to you to get the paperwork taken care of. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
And congratulations on being a new mom.
Thank you. Going to go address that right now.
Great. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, we've got the two people, their hands up, and I know Mr. Slaven was saying the chat function was working, but I'm just throwing this out there. If they can't, if they can't use it for whatever reason, they can feel free to shoot me a quick email. D. Sullivan, so D is in Delta, Sullivan at wareham dot ma dot U S. Again, D. Sullivan at wareham dot ma dot U S. And I'll try and monitor it and see, see what's up.
Thank you. Next on the agenda would be to appoint a designated to the Joint Transportation Planning Group, GTPG, and Ms. Wertz? I'm guessing that we know what we're going to be doing on this motion.
Yep. I, I move, I move to appoint Alan Slaven, the designee to the Joint Transportation Planning Group.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion made and a second to appoint Alan Slaven. There's also an alternate named on the form. Is, do we want to include that in our motion? There's also an alternate named on the form, is, do we want to include that in our motion?
True.
Please. Could you please um add Mr. Chadwick as the alternate, alternate, Ms. Wertz, in your?
I move to appoint Alan Slaven as the designee to the Joint Transportation Planning Group with Mr. Jared Chadwick as second alternate.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, um, as presented by Ms. Wertz. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Um, Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Slaven?
Abstain.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, three zero one, thank you very much. I have a motion, please, to accept a donation, very generous donation. Ms. Wertz?
I move that we accept the funds from Gateway to Senior Resources in the amount of two thousand three hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty cents to the Council of Aging.
Second.
Eighty nine cents.
Mine says eighty cents.
Mine says eighty nine. Let me just look at the check. It's, it should be eighty nine.
Okay, eighty nine cents.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Um, this is a, an entity that is closing out its books, and the, they have chosen to donate the balance of what they have in their bank to the Wareham Council on Aging. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes, and thank you.
Yeah, and my, mine as well, thank you very much. And um, so it is approved. Is, I have no forty-eight hour business, Mr. Sl- Sullivan, do you have a town administrator's report?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, so just uh quick thing, we had town meeting last Monday and Tuesday, you know, obviously, a lot went into it. And the, the first thank you I wanted to do was everybody that attended and voted the, those two nights. I want to thank them for their time, their consideration and deliberation during it. It was uh, it was great to see, I think it's, that was one of the larger numbers on the first night that we've seen in uh, in a little bit. So appreciate everybody's hard work. Um, you know, there's also, there, there's a lot of people to thank on this as well, yourselves, the Select Board put a lot of effort into this. Planning Board, um, certainly other boards and committees, uh, you know, and definitely the, all the employees. But the ones I'd like to focus on today and really give a thank you is, I think, I think they fall through the cracks through a lot of the thank yous are the Finance Committee. You know, the nine members, nine residents of this community that give up a lot of their time throughout the whole year for the uh, for the two town meetings that we have, really three, when you consider the special. Uh, as shown by the town meeting votes, they're not always in agreement, which I think is great. You know, there's, it's, I think it shows they put a lot of deliberation, thought, and uh take their time with, with these votes. So, you know, um, their expertise, their consideration, I think they're, they're well worth it for the town, and they're very helpful in how we get our jobs done, so. Last of that, I'd like to uh thank Mr. Pigeon, who's gone through three tours of duty, um, the Finance Committee, and uh you know, and congratulate him for all his hard work, help, and really making it a uh better process, and wish him luck in his retirement job as a sewer commissioner. So, but honestly, thank you to all of them, and uh obviously yourselves and everybody involved. It was uh, you know, there, there was a lot of good discussion, and uh, I, I thought it was uh two, two really good nights at the end of the day, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's go to Liaison Initiative Reports. Remember, we have to be out of here in twenty minutes. Um, Mr. Bessie?
Uh, I will shorten that and say nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven.
Uh, just to piggyback on Mr. Sullivan, I'd like to thank the moderator for being able to run a meeting over two days, in which we have four articles between special and regular, that uh produced a lot of discussion back and forth. Uh, not everybody was happy, obviously, because you never are when there's discussion on both ends, but I'd like to thank the people who came to town meeting and the civility they showed during this time. It's, it's enjoyable to see town meeting work the way it should work, and people be able to discuss their points, not agree with it, and then they walk out and basically shake hands and thank each other for coming. Uh, Wednesday, Serpent Commission met, he brought in the Undersecretary of Transportation for the state of Massachusetts, one of the new employees. And uh I had a discussion with her Chief Aide uh today about the commuter rail for Wareham, and I'm hoping to get some positive information shortly. We'll see what happens. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz?
Um, I will leave what both gentlemen just said on the table and agree with them, so I have nothing more to say.
Thank you very much. I have no reports this evening. May I have a motion, please, on mo- approval of minutes, Ms. Wertz?
I move to accept the minutes for March seventh and March fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes of March seventh, March fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, they are approved. Mr. Sullivan, have you heard from either of those two individuals?
Yes, and uh I also heard from uh District Manus Tom there. They said that the chat was showing uh disabled on their screen for the non-panelist, but um um, Maury Carlin was looking to speak about a sign on a beach. Uh, you know, feel, feel free to reach out to me tomorrow, and I know the Selectmen are the ones that approve it. Uh, we'll see what the uh, what sort of sign you're talking about, so if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I can have him reach out to me.
That would be fine, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
And then um, Mr. Rossman, that's um, oh, they have two items to discuss, so they emailed me separately, so two items to discuss regarding the beach at the bottom of Admiral's Way and onset next. Um, recent posted restrictions, kayak storage and beach and poor solution of sand. So that's all, that's um, that would be stuff through the Harbor Masters Office and myself, so it wouldn't be the, it sounds like it's day to day, so I will uh reach out to them and uh see if we can uh see what's going on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. And I just want to clarify to everyone that unless an item is actually on the agenda, we can hear, but we cannot respond to um comments or questions from the public. So thank you very much for reaching out, and Mr. Sullivan will take care of the issues tomorrow. Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Slaven?
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn and thank those people who made the effort to say to go vote.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, it is not debatable. May I have a roll call vote? Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Uh, in keeping with Mr. Chadwick's thing, I'll abstain.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, three zero one, we adjourn. Thank you very much, Wareham. Good night, Wareham.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Enjoy the weather. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for stepping up. Thanks.